So my clock just hit seven o'clock.
Yes.
At that, I will call this meeting to order. It is Tuesday, March first, 2022. And Janet, we do this a favor and call the roll, please.
Sure, Councilmember Diaz.
Here.
Councilmember one.
I'm here.
Councilmember Wolf.
Here.
Vice Mayor Tillman.
Here.
Mayor Cloven.
I am here, too. And Janet, we can move to item number two. If you could run the meeting protocol, protocol video, that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Due to COVID-19, this meeting will be conducted as a Zoom webinar pursuant to the provisions of ZB 361, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act. This meeting is also being webcast on the City of Clayton's website. The mayor will call upon its council presenter staff and other speakers by name and ask that they speak clearly and state their names before giving comments or remarks. Persons participating via webcast and Zoom with their cameras enabled are reminded that their activities are visible to viewers. Members of the public participating by Zoom wishing to speak should use the raise hand feature or dial star nine and the mayor will call upon them at the appropriate time. Telephone attendees will be called upon by the last four digits of their phone number. It is requested that public speakers state their name, but providing such information is voluntary. Written public comments received by the Clayton City Clerk by 5:00 PM today will be entered into the record, but will not be read out loud. If authors of the written correspondence would like to speak, they are free to do so and should raise their hand and the mayor will call upon them at the appropriate time. A roll call vote will be taken for all action items. The chat feature is not active. In order to get the full Zoom experience, please make sure your application is up to date.
Thank you, Janet. That was awesome. And hopefully, we don't have to do that too many times more in the future. We're looking forward to getting back in person shortly. So let's move on to item number three and Councilmember Diaz, if you would do us the honor, please, of doing the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Diaz. Much appreciated. And we'll move on to item number four, which is our consent calendar. And if there are any items that would like to be pulled, I will open that up right now to our council members. Hearing.
I want to go ahead.
Cap, Vice Mayor Tillman.
Uh, four D, please.
Excellent. Would you like it pulled completely or and have a second or just we'd like to talk about it now?
About it really quickly.
Sure, great.
Just in case any of them are on the line, I haven't looked to see who our attendees are, but I did want to thank the nine residents who did step up to serve on the Charles Landscape Committee. I'm very pleased that we're going to have almost maximum capacity on that, which is great. And and all of them were very enthusiastic about serving. And so very pleased about that. And our first meeting will be next week. Thank you.
Definitely. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or items that need to be discussed from our council members? If not, I will open the consent calendar up for public comment. And if you in the public would like to talk on any item on the consent calendar, you're welcome to do so at this time and you would have three minutes. Janet, do we have any hands to discuss any items on the consent calendar?
I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Thanks, Janet. Much appreciated. And with that, we will close public comment on item number four and we'll move it back to the council. Is there a discussion or would somebody like to move approval on the consent calendar?
Move approval as written.
Is there a second?
Go ahead.
Second from from Councilmember Juan, first from Councilmember Wolf. Janet, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Diaz.
Yes.
Councilmember Juan.
Hi.
Councilmember Wolf.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tillman.
I.
Mayor Cloven.
Yes. And with that, item number four is closed and we move on to item number five, which is recognitions and presentations. And we'll start off with item five A, which is our certificates of recognition for our school, public, public school students. We're exemplifying the do the right thing character trait of self-discipline, which is during the months of January and February of 2022. And I am going to turn this over to Councilmember Wolf. Uh, he is great in this capacity. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. It's an honor again to, uh, to do this. I appreciate it. And it's great to have our student winners with us. And I see people are joining as we speak now. So I don't know who will be first. It looks up. There's Katie Sanchez, our principal from Diablo Elementary. Hello there. So I guess I'll hand it over to you to introduce your teachers and students and the winners and all that. So go ahead.
Fabulous. And just a quick thank you to Mayor Cloven for joining us for our site council meeting in which we were passing our safety plan. So it did pass and we appreciate, I think we're the only school that had the mayor come, so I should give you a ribbon. So thank you for that. Um, so I would like to introduce Ms. Erickson. She's the teacher I see on right now. I'm going to see if the other teacher is joining us, so I'm going to mute myself. And Ms. Erickson, if you would like to speak about Mr. Ian Meyer.
I would love to speak about Ian Meyer and I just, I am dying laughing right now that I see that Ian is in his car. Are you coming from another practice, which is perfect because that is exactly why I nominated Ian for self-discipline because this kid, the most activities I have ever known of any child I have ever had in my over decade of teaching. And I'm actually glad that this meeting is being recorded. It's like official. I'm hoping this is notes for posterity because Ian has promised me many times that when he goes to the Olympics, I get to go and watch him. So I hope this is on the record because I would like to do that because Ian is very much Olympic bound. I don't know which sport yet. He has water polo, swimming, I think soccer tonight. I didn't even know he played soccer. He every night he has something that he is doing. And usually students that I have like that might get distracted, might fall behind. Ian has never missed an assignment. He has never not passed a test, not aced a test. Perf- almost perfect scores in everything that he does. When the definition of on it, this kid is on it in everything that he does. And he is on me sometimes, maybe a little too much, but I let it slide because he keeps me on my toes. So the most disciplined child I have ever seen walk through the doors of my classroom and I'm so happy that he could log in in between one of his many lists of things that he does.
That dimension is he's watching the State of the Union, too, at the same time. So this Ian, Ian, you sound like just a fantastic person. So have you picked a sport? Is it going to be what? Bob sled? What is going to be your sport for the Olympics?
Um, it's probably going to be swimming.
Probably going to be swimming, but it's great that you have all that other, all those other things to fall back on if swimming doesn't work out. That's, that's amazing. I've been to many Olympics and it's really, it's really a fabulous thing. And so we hope you make the Olympics one day. Well, we want to congratulate you for being so full of self-discipline and for keeping Ms. Erica Erickson on her toes. So congratulations and we'll give you a round of applause and and we will definitely get you your certificate signed by everyone on our city council. So congratulations, Ian.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. And now, um, who do we have for our next, our next winner here?
I, I see that Ms. Van Otrieb is in. And so I'm going to let her introduce her fabulous second grader, who I also see in a fabulous outfit. And so I will let, I'll let Ms. Van Otrieb go for it.
Hello, everyone. Hello, Mayher. Well, when I was asked to choose a child for the award of self-discipline, Mayher was the obvious choice. Mayher is never distracted by the students around her. She's always focused on her work. She does quality work all the time. She never blurts out in class. She doesn't disrupt those around her. She exemplifies the life skill of self-discipline. And I'm so proud of you, Mayher. Great job.
Thank you, Mrs. V.
You're welcome.
Well, congratulations, Mayher. Very good.
Thank you.
Self-discipline. So do you ever, do you ever miss any school?
Uh, yes, I do.
You do every once in a while, but then you make it up, right?
No, not really.
You're not only self-disciplined, but you're honest, too. That's fantastic. So congratulations to you. A round of applause for you and we will get you your certificate, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow, that's fantastic. And, uh, and thank you to our teachers and to you, Ms. Sanchez, once again, for coming through with such great students for our Do the Right Thing program. Our next, our next Do the Right Thing program actually is, we'll do it in May for three months. We have, uh, what do we have? Integrity will be our next, our next thing. So we'll, we'll get, get that in May. So thank you.
That's a good one. I'll see you tomorrow, Mayher.
See you. Bye, Mayher. All right. And now I see Principal Fong is here from Diablo View Middle School and he has his winner. So hello and welcome to you.
I am muted.
There you go.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor Cloven. All right. So let me see. Do I have my students here? I don't see them on my, oh.
I see one, uh, one.
Yes.
Well, there they are. Okay.
And then Kaylee, uh, I see Kaylee's dad's name, so I assume that she is here. All right. So I'm going to start. So, um, first just to say that um, when I think about self-discipline, I think about independence, motivation, undying worth, work ethic, and all of that without somebody nagging you or telling you to do it. So, um, I'll start with Luca since he's the first on my screen. And so when one of his teachers said that I can always count on Luca to do the right thing. He exhibits self-discipline on a daily basis in the classroom. He is consistently on task and he never needs to be told what to do. He is kind, respectful and helpful to others and he's an outstanding student all around. So that's Luca.
Fantastic, Luca. How you doing? Who, who's sitting next to you there?
It's my mom.
Hello, Mom.
Thanks for having us.
Congratulations on, on this, Luca. So Luca, what does self-discipline mean to you? Does that mean that you, you, you wake up as soon as the alarm goes off? You never hit the snooze button?
Well, my mom wakes me up and I.
There you go. That's, that's why she's standing there next to you. That's, that's, that's fantastic. Well, good. Congratulations, Luca. Self-discipline is a very hard thing to, uh, to achieve and we thank you for doing so. So congratulations to you. And we will get your certificate to you very shortly. And congratulations, Mom.
And I also have Kaylee Abregana. Kaylee is quiet, but she is very serious and super self-disciplined. Her teacher says that she always maintains high expectations for her product. She comes early to school to review her work with her classroom notebook and scans for any admissions to it. Her work is maintained even when she's absent and she is an excellent student and very self-disciplined.
And accepting for Kaylee today will be her father, it looks like.
Yes, well, uh, having problem with the computer.
That's okay.
She doesn't want to be on camera.
That's our, that's okay. That's all right. So congratulations, Kaylee. Self-discipline. That's fantastic. And you got your dad there and you can, uh, and you can help him with his tech. So that's very good. Congratulations and thank you. Thank you. A round of applause for you, too, for your certificate and Mr. Fong, thank you so much once again for helping us with our Do the Right Thing program and, uh, and your, your students are fantastic as always. So we thank you so much.
Oh, thank you.
And we'll see you next time for integrity in May. All right. Thank you all for Do the Right Thing and, um, Mayor, thanks for letting me do this once again and back to you.
Thank you. With that, it closes item five A, which is our certificates of recognition. And we'll move on to item five B, which is a proclamation declaring March as Irish-American Heritage Month in the City of Clayton. And just as we'll go ahead and say, I am declaring March as Irish-American Heritage Month. Whereas Irish-American Heritage Month was first celebrated by proclamation of the president in 1991. It seemed natural to choose March. St. Patrick's Day falls on March 17th for the month-long recognition of the contributions that Irish immigrants and their descendants have made to the United States society. Virtually every realm of American endeavor, from steelworking to biotechnology to literature, has seen improvement through Irish-descended hands and minds. And whereas the tradition of presidential proclamation continues on a yearly basis with the top political figure from Ireland, Latasha, visiting to conduct a shamrock giving ceremony at the Oval Office, followed in the evening by a reception attended by the president and other key figures of both governments. And whereas, most people know the basic facts of the influx of Irish families to the shores of the United States during the 19th century with the image of the Irish immigrant being conscripted into the army minutes after stepping off the boat, perhaps the most ingrained in the minds of our former grade school history students. And whereas, what is less talked about is the anti-immigrant sentiment that was often faced by new Irish-Americans largely as a result of the Catholicism, which clashed with the predominantly Protestant backgrounds of the majority of families whose members had been among the original colonists. Irish-Americans faced bitter competition, even slanted legislation in their search for good jobs and a place to call home. And whereas this month, we recognize not only the overcoming of those obstacles by Irish-Americans, but also the incredible breadth and depth of their contributions to American society. From the Union's edge over the Confederacy, the Civil War, to the intellectual contributions that have kept our country on the top tiers of accomplishment. Now, therefore, I, Peter Cloven, Mayor, on behalf of the entire Clayton City Council proclaim March as Irish-American Heritage Month in Clayton, California, and I call as observance, observance to the attention of all of our citizens. And that is, we'll close item five B. And for item five C, the proclamation declaring March as National Women's History Month in the City of Clayton, I will turn this over to Vice Mayor Tillman.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Okay. So declaring March as National Women's History Month, whereas Women's History Month celebrates the often overlooked contributions of women in history, society and culture. It has been annually observed in the United States and other countries, including the United Kingdom and Australia, every March since 1987. And whereas March is selected as the month for observing Women's History Month to correspond with International Women's Day on March 8th. And Canada observes it in October in correspondence with Person's Day on October 18th. And whereas the month-long commemoration started with Women's History Day in 1978, organized by the School District of Sonoma, California. Hundreds of students participated in the essay competitions. Many presentations were given and a parade was held in Santa Rosa. The idea caught on and a few years later, school districts, communities and organizations all over the country were celebrating the day. And whereas in 1980, the National Women's History Alliance championed for the holiday to be observed as a national week. And this was backed by President Jimmy Carter, who issued the first proclamation declaring the week of March 8th as National Women's History Week. The following year, Congress forwarded a resolution establishing a national observance. Six years later, the expansion of the event to the whole month of March was successfully petitioned by the National Women's History Project. Now, therefore, I, Holly Tillman, Vice Mayor, and on behalf of the entire Clayton City Council proclaim March as National Women's History Month in Clayton, California, and I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Tillman. I appreciate that. And with that, item five B is closed and we'll move on. Or five C, pardon me, is closed. And we'll move on to item five D, which is a proclamation declaring March 31st as Caesar Chavez Day in the City of Clayton. And if you would do the honor, Councilmember Diaz, it would be much appreciated.
Thank you. I'd like to make two comments about the last two items. One, uh, my wife is Irish, so she's very pleased at this. And number two, every Thursday I have lunch with a group of Irishmen, including one resident here by the name of Tony Dunleavy, Dunleavy, who you will see at the, at the Mudville Grill on March 17th in his prominent location. Thank you. All right. Let me go to, uh, the proclamation relative to Caesar Chavez. Uh, whereas Caesar Estrada Chavez was born on March 31st, 1927, uh, to a Mexican-American family in Yuma, Arizona. He spent his early years as a farm, at the farm and where his mother worked as a part-time laborer. Uh, as the Great Depression paroled the, the states in the late 1930s, the Chavez family lost their home, uh, to foreclosure. And, uh, they were now basically nomads, uh, in this country of their own. His family moved to California in search of a livelihood. And whereas the migration had a grave impact on Chavez, he dropped out of school, uh, soon after and began working in the fields. In 1946, he joined the Navy and served for two years, after which his discharge, he regained, uh, rejoined the farmwork, uh, movement and also got married and settled in Delano, California. He, whereas after having a life of instability, low wages and no ownership, Chavez began questioning the net rationality behind the fact or the lack of accumulated wealth over, after all the years of hard work and, and dedication. His quest for answers led him to a path of grassroots organizing. I'll make a comment about that in a minute. Uh, in 1952, he became a mobilizer for a Latino civil rights group called the Community Service Organization, or CSO. And whereas Chavez spent the next, uh, decade of his life fighting against racial and economic discrimination, he encouraged his community members to participate in democracy and led hundreds of voter registration drives. He later became the National Director of the CSO. After a dispute with the organization, he resigned and, uh, that post in 1962 and joined hands with Dolores Huerta. Together, they formed the National Farm Workers Association. Whereas he spent the following years of his life involved in regular protests, strikes and participation in labor uprisings, he through the, throughout the country, inspired, uh, by Gandhi's principles of nonviolence, he led hundreds of sit-in protests and hunger strikes. And whereas Caesar passed away in 1993, again, I'll bring that back up. Uh, later than, uh, later that year, he was, uh, posthumously awarded the Presidential Medal of Freedom by President Bill Clinton. Even decades after his passing, he continues to inspire human rights activists and others everywhere in the, as a folk hero and to millions of America. Therefore, the mayor, on behalf of the entire City of Clayton Council, now proclaimed as March 31st as Caesar Chavez Day in Clayton and shall call the observance for this attention to all of our citizens. And I want to make several comments. One, just last, uh, or two Fridays ago, I attended a funeral for a gentleman by the name of Miguel Barragon. At that funeral, and Miguel and I go back because we actually established the Hispanic Community Foundation, which when we started was only giving out a paltry $10,000, $15,000 a year. It now gives out over a million and a half dollars per year. I'm very proud of that. I was the founding chairman for 10 years. With me was a gentleman that I've known for probably 25, 30 years, Herman Gaiagos. Herman was a counterpart and a fellow organizer with Caesar Chavez. Uh, Herman just turned 91 at the end of last year. And I love spending time with him, listening to the stories of what he and Seaver went through to try and establish the Farm Workers Union. Absolutely fascinating. Finally, when I was working up in Sacramento, uh, I was headed of security and investigations, but in 1993, I got a call from the governor's office to go over and take care of the cemetery board. And one of my first duties, one of my first duties, because Caesar had just passed away and they wanted to bury him on the Delano grounds of the farmworkers. Well, the state has definitions and legal requirements of what is or what is not a cemetery. But I had the privilege and the honor to write an executive order, put it into law and have Caesar buried in Delano on the farmworkers', uh, on the farmworkers' grounds. On the other side of it, a little bit later on, I did the same thing for the other side of the fence with allowing, uh, Pat Nixon to be buried on the Nixon grounds in, uh, in Yorba Linda. So we balanced it all out, but it was an honor, uh, to be able to have, uh, Caesar buried, where he started with Doris Huerta, the, uh, the, uh, Farm Workers Union. And that's one of my few claims to fame. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Diaz. You were definitely the appropriate person to read that proclamation and I appreciate it. For those of you who, uh, do, who are curious, um, we have been reading proclamations as established by the city council going back about a year. We started in April of last year. And we're just about done. We came up with a calendar. So coming the first meeting in March, I think we're going to be done with proclamations. These every year will be acknowledged in the future, but will not be read in whole. Um, so we are just about done with reading those in whole. That doesn't mean we don't get a proclamation that are requests to be read on a regular basis. I told you at the last meeting as mayor that I would not take it upon myself to read a proclamation without getting approval from the city council, or at least some feeling what the city council would approve or not. Um, I have been requested by, uh, the Red Cross and Pat Mitch's office to, uh, the First County Supervisor to read a proclamation related to the Red Cross and its appreciation for their services. If you have any reason why I should not read that, I, I would encourage you to get ahold of me. If I don't hear from you, um, then I will, um, talk with our city manager to have it put on the agenda next time for us as a proclamation. And with that, item number five D is closed. And we'll move on to item number six, six, uh, city reports. And we'll start off with item six A, our city manager. Rena, it's all yours.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. And just a couple of updates, um, on our Clayton Cares Program. Uh, we have, uh, issued, um, 35 business grants and seven household grants. We have another five business grants and seven additional household grants, excuse me, that are pending. Um, and with our mid-year, we will have a, uh, an accounting of where we are with all of our ARPA funds. So that is coming, um, uh, shortly. As the mayor also indicated, we are headed back toward in-person meetings. So in, uh, later this month, we will have the council's goal-setting session. The plan is to have that in person uh, for the council members. Public will be able to participate via Zoom and then in April, we will hopefully have, um, fully open uh, council meetings, uh, pending how, what space we can arrange in terms of physical distancing requirements, et cetera. And those are the updates I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Rena. Much appreciated. We'll move on to, uh, city reports from our city council, item six B. As much as you can, please bring it back to how it's relevant to our constituents and our residents of Clayton. And if you don't mind, we'll start off with council member one for your city council report.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm, uh, I'm traveling here, so I'm not in a good place for video, but I primarily did phone calls and emails with, uh, folks in town answering questions and, um, getting feedback.
Thank you, Councilmember one. And with that, we'll go to Vice Mayor Tillman for your report.
Sure. Thank you. All right. Let's see my notes. On two 17, I attended the Cal City's Legislative Discussion Forum, um, and that's for the policy committee that I serve on for the community services, uh, policy. Um, this was. This was bringing all of us together so that everybody can give a report out on what they discussed. And to my knowledge, all of us were working on some of the same issues, which was great. And I will give you guys more feedback when we have our next one, which is on Cinco de Mayo. Because by then, we would have met on April twenty-eighth for all of us to dig in a little bit more on the policy writing. And I'll have more details to share after that date. On the twenty-second, I met with the superintendent for Mount Diablo Unified High School at Northgate High School. He was meeting with some of the black parents and guardians in the district to give an update on how students are faring in the district. And it actually was not as dire as some of us were led to believe or would believe, which was nice. He did say that there were some issues that the state has uncovered, that there's a lot of issues with students of color being pulled out, either being targeted, targeted is too strong of a word, but being designated as needing extra assistance or being expelled or suspended from school. And so that was a red flag for them, that that number was a lot higher in our district than others throughout the state. So that's something that they're monitoring. But overall, he did say that a lot of students are attending universities and colleges. They are graduating. And he wanted us to be aware of that. He also shared that there was a program at College Park High School, which was a forum for historically back black colleges and universities, so HBCUs that were there. And he advised everybody who didn't know, and I didn't know about it, that their students were welcome to attend. There would be bus service from their local high school to drive them all to College Park, where they were actually given admissions to historically black colleges and universities on the spot. In fact, my daughter got five of them, two of them with full rides, which was amazing. And two of her friends who had not even applied to colleges because they thought they just didn't have the grades, they weren't interested in doing it, actually received admissions on the spot, and they were very pleased. And actually, one of them was nearly in tears, saying that she was actually going to get out of here and go away to school. So that actually makes me a little, little emotional, just thinking that kids think that they don't have a chance, and then they actually do. On the twenty-third, I virtually attended the Mount Diablo Unified School Board Meeting. That was a big, hot, festive one with fourth grade music on the docket to be cut from this year's budget, as well as issues with the teachers and what they're fighting with Medea and their union to to actually have a contract. They haven't had one in five years. But there were a lot of students who were angry that fourth grade music was going to be cut. So there were a lot of passionate pleas from students who have come up through the district, graduated, gone on to college and graduated as well, really asking them to reconsider. And maybe even only instead of cutting, I think it was six or nine of them, even just cutting three. But unfortunately, it was cut for now. The board did say that as soon as they do receive the funding, which is a little backwards because the funding comes from the state this, in the summer, but they always have to introduce pink slips in March, I think by the middle of March. So it's a little backwards. And so unfortunately, every year, we go through the same cycle of teachers receiving pink slips due to our enrollment or the low enrollment. And then there's a mad scramble before school starts in the fall to actually backfill those positions and have teachers in classrooms. So for now, fourth grade music is cut. They did say that that will be one of the first things they bring back if they do indeed receive the educational funds from the state that they're being promised so far. On the twenty-fourth, I attended the CBCA meeting that was at the Batalahara Grill. It was nice to be able to be out and about with others there since we haven't had an in-person meeting. We used to have those at that Oakhurst Country Club, but due to the pandemic, we weren't able to have those there. So this was the first foray into having an in-person meeting again, which was nice. And then on the twenty-fifth, I was invited to the local elected women's luncheon, which was nice to meet other local electives in our county to hear what other ladies are thinking about running this fall. Also to hear ones who, actually, they were the, I can't remember the term of endearment they use. I think grandmothers who started this organization. And it's just a way for people to meet each other, encourage each other, and brainstorm on running for office, which was nice. I also, that afternoon, assembled the door hangers, these that everyone should have received. I don't know if you can see them, but it's what the city put out. We assembled these in bundles for each neighborhood. And then on Sunday, we all met in the Grove Park to distribute those throughout the neighborhoods, which was nice. We had, I think about, I'd have to count, but several, several people. I want to say it was about fifteen-ish of us, and then others who couldn't make it down to the Grove that I was able to go drop those off to because they were interested in delivering them. They just couldn't meet that morning. And I took some pictures driving around town as I saw people out delivering those, which is great. And the residents that I ran into were very appreciative of the effort of us getting these out, letting them know about the ARPA funds that are available for the businesses, as well as the residents who do qualify, and then also our housing element and playing around with the Balancing Act program. So that is my report. Super long-winded, but thank you to all of the volunteers who hit the ground with us. Much appreciated. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Appreciate it. Councilmember Diaz, do you have a report for us, please?
I have several items. I too attended the CBCA meeting, and I have to say, it was interesting. We couldn't talk to one another. I don't know how you got to talk, but I had to yell at the person sitting across from me. Anyway, but there we were, together for the first time. Other than that, I met with the city manager and the chief of police on a variety of issues. And I want to publicly applaud our chief of police for several things. Number one, she spearheaded the replacement of some cameras in the Grove Park. So when it reopens, even now, this system will be very state-of-the-art, high-definition, and be able to keep an eye on it. That system is tied to the officer's cell phone so that they can be able to receive information directly from when there's an issue that crops up at the, at the Grove Park. She has converted the entire staff out of, or the vehicles out of the old Crown Victorias to the complete new Ford S Police Vehicles. That's an accomplishment. We now have a completely state-of-the-art police vehicle fleet, fully staffed. That's another compliment for the chief. And finally, for her personnel development, she has done an excellent job in training at least now two of the sergeants in the administrative sergeant role. Starting off first with Sergeant Jason Saw, who did it for an extended period of time. And now she's brought Sergeant Rich Ane in there. And Rich, I gotta say, is putting his mark on that job and doing an excellent job in representing the police department to the community. And finally, since we will not have a meeting until after, I don't believe we will. Well, anyway, the seventeenth of March is our first Mayor Bob Hoyer's birthday. He will be one hundred and one. God bless him. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Diaz. Much appreciated. And to you, Councilmember Wolf.
Okay, I had meetings with you and our mayor, and also with our city manager. And of course, I had emails and calls from citizens and a couple of interesting ones this week. In fact, one today about some dune buggies or something that are running around behind the Clayton Community Park. I don't know what that's all about, but I'm sure we're going to find out. And I met with, let's see, oh, I attended the Bart redistricting meeting, the final one. I think we definitely heard from a change in tenor there with regard to our, where we're going to wind up. But I don't know when the final, Peter, you can probably tell me when the final is going to be final. But hopefully, we will remain in the central county. And then I was honored to attend the flyer distribution on Sunday. It was a great way to spend a Sunday out there, a beautiful day, distributing these flyers for the city. People were very responsive, which was, which was great. I was actually going to put a flyer on one door, and just as I reached for it, the, the dog decided to answer the door. So that was, that was exciting. But nevertheless, it was, it was great. And it was kind of like being on the campaign trailer. Got to get a chance to actually talk to people about various things. And, and it was, like I said, it was, it was an honor to do. And hopefully, people will take the time to get into Clayton Cares if they need it, and also to, to take a look at the housing element on the website. So I believe that is my entire report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wolf. Much appreciated. So yes, we, I did get a chance to represent our position to stay in central county and not be redistributed by Bart into East County. I think it was heard well at the meeting on the sixteenth. Even East County's Bart Director, Mr. Foley, basically said, no, there's no reason that Clayton should go in to be in East County. But I think the general position right now, there's a couple maps, and I don't think Clayton's on either one that is being evaluated to go into, into East County. So I think we're in a good place at this point. I really enjoyed meeting with the Mount Devilman, Mount Diablo's Elementary School. As Principal Sanchez said, it was very, it was, they were not expecting me. But I got a letter, and I said, I said, well, stop on. They were really doing a good job. What their job was is they were talking about a safety plan to look at fire and other natural disasters, intruder, and even active shooter responses, and how to coordinate and how to, how to work with the kids. And I think that that type of preparation is very valuable, and I applaud them for their efforts. I know a lot of you people out in Clayton don't really care about hazardous waste. That's kind of my, I'm a nerd that way. I'm a biochemist. And I was with about hazardous waste material commission, and we were talking about PFOS, which is a chemical that's in Teflon and a bunch of other things like biotardants, and how prevalent is it in our, in our community and what our state is doing relative to detection limits down to the parts per trillion. And it was fascinating and how our county is responding to that. I enjoyed our CBCA meeting. Jim, yes, the music was extremely loud. It was, and, and I was, I was yelling to talk to my next-door neighbor as well. But it was great just to see people smiling without masks and just being together. And I'm really looking forward to that, to being a staple of who we are when we get together again in person. So that's awesome. The door knocker program, which we put together this weekend, was, I would say it's a little bit spontaneous. We requested the community development director and our city manager to put together ARPA and housing element flyers. I did not get those until Thursday afternoon. Wasn't even sure that I was going to get them until Thursday afternoon. But when I, as soon as I received them, I sent a message out to all the planning commissioners and the city council members, let them know that they're in, and this is how we're planning on distributing. Please get your people out there. We had a great cross-section of our community. It wasn't, you know, we are often talking about how divided we are, but we had people from both sides coming together. I think there was about twenty-two to twenty-three people actually out there distributing the flyers. We covered about ninety percent of the neighborhoods. If you haven't received yours in your door knocker yet, it's coming this week. I'm assured that everyone will, everybody will have a flyer relative to the Balancing Act protocol. It's a game, it's an online game for, where you can put your housing pieces, as well as the funds for individuals and businesses that are available still to give away. And I, that, this type of communication and getting out there and meeting people is exactly what we need to bring, to do to bring the community together. It's going to be important to do specifically when we have united messages in the future about what type of revenue generation proposals we have to submit to our residents. If we can have all of us, planning commissioners and city councilmen together on the united message on what it is we're asking for and why, I think it will be much more palatable for our citizens to understand. I have to say that that's an important thing. I have received many, many phone calls and emails in the past two weeks in response to the articles that were put in the Pioneer, and it's created more confusion than, than, than not. I want to be very clear. We have not, as a council, yet chosen a vehicle to create revenue or an amount at this point. And we're going to have those conversations in the future, and we're looking forward to public participation in those and public forums as we get firm and united in how we're going to present that. I had an amazing Sunday, eating eighteen samples of chili from our Clayton Sluice Chili Cook-Off. That was a lot of fun to do that with Mayor Geller and our sergeant chief, Sergeant Dunia. It was a lot of fun, a great afternoon. And I, again, it's Clayton Dean Clayton. I can't wait to the Art and Wine Festival and being back to the way we know we can be. And with that, that's the end of my report, and we will close item number six C and move on to item number seven. That was six B probably, and move on to item seven, which is public comment on nine non-agenda items. And for non-agenda items, and your time, I beseech you as public to talk to the whole council as, as a unit. Do not single out a specific city councillor. All of us are doing the best we can, and we, it's important to be kind and respectful and limit your language so our children can listen to this and learn about our, how civil we are in a civic setting. And with that, Janet, do we have any hands raised?
I have a couple of hands raised. Our first hand is James. James, as I promote you to panelists, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Okay, I think you can hear me now. Can you hear me now?
James, welcome.
Thank you very much. It's with all this technology, you forget you got to unmute yourself with Zoom. And so I do want to start off with, you know, thank you all for the great work you all do. I'm a volunteer on our supervisory committee for a large credit union. And, and I don't think you hear that enough from people, and it takes a lot of time away from your family. You may get a small stiffen, but your time is the most essence. And again, I really, I really want to thank you all for doing this activity for our great city. The reason I'm here today to talk to you about this is, is I discovered something, and that is that the permitting costs for driveways are extremely expensive and onerous. And for me, it was a shock, and I talked to other residents who recently had to go through the permitting process and also talking with contractors who are involved in these driveways. And I was just, I couldn't believe what I was hearing. And so I want to make you aware of the issue, everyone aware of the issue, is that for a simple driveway replacement in Clayton, and most of our driveways are going to need to be replaced in the next five or 10 years, especially in the Oakhurst area, as driveways are popping, et cetera, is that what I've seen here in cost for the permit and then the time of our contractor, city engineer, it's going to be somewhere between seven hundred dollars to fifteen hundred dollars for permitting and time involved. And plus, okay, plus, you need to put a two thousand dollar deposit down, that is the contractor, with running time. So this is a, some of that money will be repaid. But the, the city engineer, who's a contractor, can charge at will against that two thousand dollar cost. And so for a driveway replacement, I'm shocked in the sense that you have to do a pre-inspection and then a post-inspection, and the city engineer said basically, it's going to take an hour for each inspection. Even so, it may take five minutes, he's going to charge on an hour. So again, I don't know, seven hundred or fifteen hundred dollars, but it's actually a huge cost because I don't know if you're aware, I'm sure you are, concrete and paper cost has gone up fifty to a hundred percent. So it's extremely expensive right now. From my perspective, before I became a financial expert at Chevron, I did several years of construction. And my dad also was the, led the over, led the projects in the city, San Francisco. There's the San Francisco Opera House and Asian Art Museum, and so I've consulted him on a lot of any time I'm building stuff. And we just had a laugh at this, saying, you know, he said pretty much to me, welcome son to city bureaucracy and cost. And this is why I've done with all my whole life. And so he doesn't feel any pity for me. So, but I do want to bring it to you because we're not San Francisco. And I can tell you, there is, there is no value added through this inspection. It could be streamlined, simplified, you know, all the working.
James, I hear you, and that is, that's news to me, and I appreciate your comments. The three minutes are up, and I, loud and clear, thank you very much.
One quick thing, Peter, before I go, there is a solution. I just hope that you do look at simplifying the permitting process for driveways. That would be great, okay?
Thank you, James. Appreciate your time.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Hey, could I ask one quick question? Mr. Killoran, you mentioned your father. It isn't James Killoran from San Francisco who worked in the telecommunications. It isn't James Killoran from San Francisco who worked in the telecommunications, was it? If you can, let our city clerk know because I worked with him. Thank you.
Apologize for cutting you off, James, for trying to keep three minutes and to be fair for everybody. So thank you. Any other hands, Janet? Thank you.
Yes, I have a couple more hands. Mark, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Greetings, Mark. Welcome.
Good evening. Let's see, Mayor Cloven, Vice Mayor Tillman, members of the city council, indeed, good evening. My name is Mark Foley. I am your friendly neighborhood BART Director for District Two. I represent Contra Costa County near the Delta from Discovery Bay all the way down to Concord. But you know what? I don't represent Clayton. I love Clayton. I love your city. I love your residents. But I agree, I don't need to have Clayton in my district. So I just wanted to give you a real brief update on what's going on with BART's redistricting efforts. On February 16th, the board met to discuss the initial maps that were provided, including that draft map C, which was moving Clayton into District Two, my district. And, you know, obviously Mayor Cloven and others have expressed their concern. BART Director Allen and myself also expressed opposition to this map and moving Clayton out of District One and into my District Two. So I wanted to say I was happy to report that at last Thursday's regular BART meeting, where we continue to take up the redistricting discussion, our cartographers presented two new maps, D and E, both of which maintain Clayton's representation in District One. And, you know, both Director Allen and myself expressed support for either map. I recommended that the consultants utilize those two to make some additional changes in some of the other districts that other directors had, had raised. And to let you know, we're hoping to get that full, I guess, series of maps back to us for our board meeting on March 10th, where we hope to adopt, hopefully, District Map D or E, which should hopefully meet, I think, the majority of the board's needs. So I just wanted to give you that brief update, let you know that I think things are moving well. And hopefully, we will see some good maps that make sense in, in another week and a half.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Appreciate the news. That's, it's nice to hear. Thank you.
Happy to share. You folks have a wonderful evening.
You bet. You too.
Thanks.
Awesome. Are there any other hands, Janet?
Yes, I have one more hand raised. Dee, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Dee, welcome.
Good evening, Council. I have two things I would like to share. The first is about a letter I received recently from an anonymous tenure CBA member. There was no name attached to this letter. This person is accusing past and present CBCA Board members of fraudulent activities. This is a serious accusation. And as a CBCA member, I must ask this person or persons who have concerns over CBCA financial activities, why not disclose who you are if these are legitimate concerns? By being anonymous is telling that you are only writing this letter to CBCA members to cause division and upset in our community. What you are doing is disrespectful to all in our community, and I do not appreciate this line of communication. This letter went straight into the recycle bin. It was a waste of paper and postage. The second thing I would like to share is my appreciation for the city of Clayton in their effort to communicate two very important issues occurring in our city. Two flyers were made. One was about the Clayton Cares American Rescue Plan and the other was about participating in balancing housing in Clayton. These flyers were hand delivered to over 4,000 homes by community volunteers, our Mayor Peter Cloven, Vice Mayor Holly Tillman, and Councilmember CW Wolf. In addition to these volunteers, our planning commissioners, Terry Denzlo, Ed Miller, Amy Heinschike, and Justin Caesaran. You know, and not to bring a negative feeling out, but I felt this effort would be embraced by everyone on the council and planning commission. So I found it disappointing not to see other council members and planning commissioners join in on this important community outreach. The good news is, you can still help as we haven't finished delivering yet. So hopefully, we can count on you. And last, because not everyone in our community uses social media, many residents shared their appreciation with me when I hand delivered this information to them. This was a community effort, so thank you to all that came out to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Dee. Janet, do we have any other hands?
I do have a hand that just went up. Gary, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted.
You are, Gary. Welcome, Gary.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Council. Gary Hood, thirteen oh one, easily drive. I wanted to talk about three issues that I'll go over them quite quickly. The first one is a number I'm gonna read to you. It's called $274.46. I'm hoping that all of you know what that number is. If you don't, I'll tell you quickly. It's our assessment for our landscape tax assessment that we see on our property tax bill. I'm very concerned about that. I know that there was some language in that assessment that talked about some oversight from the community. And I know we haven't had that properly and I'm not sure why that hasn't happened. But it seems like we should maybe put a freeze on that tax if we're not gonna go ahead and provide the oversight. That's my comment on that. The prevented, preventative maintenance around town is really important. I do see quite a few trees being trimmed. I'm hoping that keeps up, but I think we would all agree, our city looks like hell. It's terrible. The downtown park is a disgrace. I see we put a fence up, which is great, that we're gonna try to restore the grass. Number two, I wanted to talk a little bit about the article that was in the Pioneer. I think Tamra did a terrible job communicating it to the public. It was a lot of hyperbole. When we talk about $400 per parcel, I know maybe that's the high end. Peter, you mentioned you wanted a sweet spot, but even at 400 or half that, we still would have a surplus. And I'm really concerned on where that surplus would go when in fact, we have a hard time, the council has a hard time managing the landscape maintenance monies. So to spend $30,000 to get an answer on that seems to me to be quite a waste. I walked the neighborhoods a couple of weeks ago and talked to probably 20 families. And out of those 20 families, everyone gave a thumbs down. No one's interested in the tax increase. We've been taxed up to our eyeballs. We're in an inflationary time, gas, food, the story goes on and on, as you know. So I'm not sure why we would spend that kind of money. And then again, if we did put it on the ballot, it's gonna cost another 10,000 to 15,000 just to even get it on the ballot. The thing that concerns me in college, we did a little study on surveys, phone surveys, phone, phone surveys and written mail surveys. And no one's gonna give you 15 minutes on the phone. I'm gonna tell you that. They're gonna hang up. They're gonna say no, number one. Most people don't have landlines anymore, so I'm not sure why we're going through that exercise. I'm hoping that the council could look within first rather than looking out to the citizens to pay for past mistakes. Maybe not this council, prior councils, but obviously, we have our guard down and we didn't manage our finances. The last item I had was to talk about an old item and I'm hoping that it can get covered. This is more addressed to council and to the city manager. I was working with a lady neighbor that had a tree fall on her house and her fence. And I think we remember that was over a year ago. We talked about, you know, I think it was Mitchell Canyon and Clayton Road. And the city manager wrote a letter to the insurance company, but she misstated the actual issue in the letter. And I think everybody agreed that our trees were not inspected. I'm hoping that the council could go ahead and find out, was the letter rewritten as promised by the city manager so the city could accept responsibility for the damages?
Thanks, Gary. Appreciate that. You, your time is up.
No, I appreciate it. I wasn't looking at the clock, but
Yeah, I know. And that's why I just kind of given your reminder, that's all. But, but thank you. If there's more that you want to talk about that, please let us know. We're curious where that, where you want to go with that. So thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Janet, how are you doing? Are there any more hands up on this item?
I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
All righto. And with that, item number seven, public comment and non-agenda items is closed. And we'll move to item number eight, public curators, we have none tonight. And go to item number nine, action items. So we're gonna discuss the availability of quorum for April 5th, our regular city council meeting, and we'll quick bring it to you, Raina.
Great, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Just briefly, at the end of, I believe, the last meeting, Vice Mayor Tillman asked that we have a brief discussion on whether we would have a quorum for the April 5th meeting. That is the week of spring break for Mount Diablo Unified School District. And there are folks, obviously, who have children in the district and may not be available that week. So that item is in front of you this evening to determine whether there's a quorum. I will say that there is, at this point, nothing urgent that has to be heard on April 5th. It can't be heard on the 15th or of March or on the 9th of April. So at this point, I'm not aware of a particular need to have the meeting on April 5th if there is not a quorum available. And with that, I leave it to the council to determine and if there is the desire to cancel the meeting, to make that known and the city clerk and I will work on that.
Thank you, Raina. I'll bring that back to the city council for questions. Does anybody have any pressing plans for that meeting during spring break that they will not be available?
I thought that I would, but it looks like that day will still be here. So I think I'm okay.
And Jeff, I think you're the other one who has children in schools. Did you have plans for that week that you may not be here?
I would, I would say my plans right now are in flight. I, I don't have a commitment either way, so I wouldn't, I can't give you an answer. I would say that I, if I'm here, I will be here. And if other things come up, then I will not.
I, I resemble that.
I have no children. They're all grown adults and I plan my schedule around city council meeting, so I will be here. Thank you.
You always have children, Jeff.
I have children. They are now grown men and women.
Are there, are there any other questions from the city council before I turn it over to, to public comments?
No.
If not, Janet, do we have any hands raised for this item on the agenda?
I do have one hand raised. Scott, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
There he is.
Finally, Jeff, that took a long time to come in. I'm, I'm sorry. I, I am stepping in away from a nine-year-old's birthday party right now. Did I miss out on public comments? I tried to make it on time. If I missed out, then carry on, please.
You missed out on general public comment. We're on a separate item now, Scott, but look forward to having you come back next time.
Well, darn it, I was gonna give you credit for something, Mayor, but we'll talk later. All right, y'all.
I don't need it. Thank you. Appreciate it. All righto. If there are, are there any other hands for this item, Janet?
I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
Thank you. And with that, public comment for action item number nine A is closed. We'll bring it back to the city council. I don't think I'm hearing any huge desire to take the evening off. And if it's a light evening, great. Is there anybody who would be opposed to our going ahead and keeping our normal April 5th meeting? If not, it sounds like, do we need to have a vote on this, Raina? Okay, then I think we will keep this, the meeting as scheduled and we'll see how it goes. And that item is, with that, action item nine A is closed. Move on to item 10, which is closed session, for which we have none. And we'll move on to item number 11, council items, request for directors of future meetings. And I will open it up. Councilmember Diaz, you are
Yeah, the only thing, and I'm not sure if this should be a future agenda item, but maybe needs discussion, but I believe we ought to form some sort of a study group made up of the city council, the planning commission and the public to discuss the housing element. I leave that to the, you and the city staff to figure out how to do it and make it happen. Thank you.
I appreciate that input. Thank you, Councilmember Diaz. Any other requests from, from council? Hearing none, that closes item number 11 and we will move to item number 12, adjournment. And at 8:05 PM, this meeting is adjourned. And I wish you all a happy Fat Tuesday. Go have yourself a cocktail and enjoy the evening.